Meeting will come to order. Please join me for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Terry, will you call roll, please?
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Archana Aliar?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our first order of business, do we have any call to the public?
No, we do not.
We have some visitors to recognize with us today. And first up is Lake Havasu City and the 2020 Census.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Mayor Kal Sheehy. Good evening, Madam President and members of the Lake Havasu Unified District Governing Board. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the importance of the upcoming U.S. Census. The United States Constitution requires everyone stand up and be counted every 10 years. And tonight, I'm asking for your help to ensure we reach all citizens in Lake Havasu City. The federal government allocates more than $675 billion every year to communities for programs and services like Title I, special education, school lunches, after-school programs, Head Start, and more. A kindergarten not counted in the 2020 Census this spring will be in high school the next time the Census comes around in 2030. Some children were missed in the 2010 Census, and uncounted children can result in missed resources for 10 years. Lake Havasu City and the Lake Havasu Unified School District partner on a number of fronts, and I'm asking for your help to ensure that we count every person in Lake Havasu City. Vice Mayor Lane will share some impacts of a complete count.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. Just a couple things. When we think about the Census and a lot of the people that we're trying to capture, and the mayor mentioned it, kids that were not counted last time. Well, kids that are now 26, 24, 23, they were 16, 15, 14. They didn't know anything about a census other than what they learned in school. So it's very important that we capture those people. But what's really important is dollars and cents. Roughly for every person that is counted in the Census, in state shared revenues, we get back $400. So Phoenix captures all this money that comes from here. Our income taxes, our gas taxes, all of those taxes. And they go to Phoenix, and they keep everything that they can keep. But they have to give it back to us, and it's roughly $400 a person. So if you extrapolate that out over the 10 years, that's $4 million. If we miscount by 1,000 people, that's $4 million that we don't get back here that we need for our roads, for our infrastructure, for our police. And what does that mean for the schools? Well, it's our programs, like our school resource officer, that the city supplies to your schools. The NOVA program, which for those of us who are my age, the DARE program.[210.23][210.23](Laughter). And that actually came from when I was already a policeman. But those things are very, very important to us. What else is important is businesses. When you're looking at businesses, why can't we have this business here? Why can't we have this business here? You have, these businesses have a group of people, and they look at the raw data. And one of the things that they look at is the Census data. We know that a business would do really well here because we know what our people like. But somebody sitting back in Little Rock, Arkansas, in a group setting that's saying, okay, what, we're going to build six stores this year. Where are we going to build them? They take, and they chuck cities out that don't have the raw data for the Census. So that census is very important. Another thing is our representatives in Washington, D.C. You know, every state has two senators, and there's 453 members of the House that are spread out throughout the United States. We have nine here in Arizona. There's 53 in California. And word has it, they actually may lose some this year because of the people that are leaving California. So we'd love to pick those seats up here in Arizona so we have more representative in Washington. So we need to do that by being counted in the Census. So those are just a few of the things that want to take up a whole lot of your time. But everyone counts, and it's so true. We need to make sure everyone, from the smallest little babies all the way up to the people that are celebrating their 100th birthday. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. And in conclusion, we have opportunities to partner with students and families of the district through a K through second grade coloring contest, third grade to sixth grade poster contest, seventh and eighth grade essay contest, and high school essay contests. And all of the contests have cash prizes included in there. So the Census Committee is targeting all citizens in Lake Havasu City and all folks that are here, but specifically parents under 30, because as Vice Mayor Lane, this will be their first time, as Vice Mayor Lane said, this is the first time that they will be counting and be counted in the U.S. Census as the head of their household. So it's really important we let them know. So I ask for your support in ensuring we count everyone in Lake Havasu City, and thank you for allowing us a few minutes this evening. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
What does being counted look like? I heard Mr. Lane say something about a postcard earlier.
That's correct. So a postcard will actually be mailed to all households in Lake Havasu City at the very first week of March. That postcard will have a unique identifier on that card to authenticate it. We ask those households to go to the website indicated, put in their unique identifier code, and fill out the census for their household. Now, if you do not receive a postcard, which some folks may not, if you don't have, if you live in an area that should get just a P.O. Box or a mailbox center, they are not going to get postcards. So we ask that you tell us that, and then we make sure that a census worker comes your way. The Census still works the way it always has. If you don't stand up and be counted, they're coming after you. So they'll be knocking on your door, and they're going to get you. It just takes a little bit longer. So, but the timing is the very first week of March. Census Day is April 1st. So that is the actual Census Day. And then Census workers will be knocking on everyone's door that does not stand up to be counted all the way through the summer. By October 1st is when the Census has to present the data to the president's office.
Census Day, April 1st.
Yes. It's not a joke, I know. Yeah.
I don't think either of them chose the day.
No, we did not. Yes.
And if I could add one more thing. If you're not computer, you don't have a computer? I'll use your microphone. If you don't have a computer, and some people don't use computers, the library will have one set up where you can go to the library and do it. We'll have one set up at City Hall where you can come to City Hall and do it. Or if you'd rather, you can just pick up the phone. There's a phone number listed on the card, and you can call on the phone and give them all the data just as, and it's just as easy for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. And then next up, we have our Lake Havasu City Education Association.
Good eve, good evening. President Ramon, Board, Superintendent Asire, and Directors. I'm just excited to say that I just added third-generation Havasu, Havasuvian on Wednesdays, so yay. And we have a 100-year-old sitting at the house, too. So we're at all spectrums at my home. But to talk about legislative session, just to give you a heads up, here's the 62 education bills in front of the Senate. Here are the 89 education bills in front of the House Education Committee. So I have just two I want to present and discuss with you, and they're both similar ones. One is the House Bill, sorry, House Bill 2898, and the Senate Bill 1224. And they're both ESA expansion-type bills. They are changing the qualifying schools to include non-governmental schools and expanding the definition of our qualified schools to include schools located in adjacent states within two miles of the border, which my concern that I shared with Senator Borelli when he was voting was that I understand that this is regarding possibly our reservations, but being a rural community and right here on the border, that if we're going to set this precedent, it might actually move in a different direction. So just maybe take some time and look at those two bills and see what, and then you might want to reach out to our legislators and let them know your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Cohen, do you have a comment?
I do. I would like to note that the February 2020 travel requests equal 0.53 metric tons of CO2, and I vote yes.
Will you, will you call for the vote?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Okay. There's no old business. Okay. Item 6.1 is the possible appointment of superintendent for the 2020-21 school year. The governing board has had opportunity in executive sessions to review applications that were received for the position of superintendent and to conduct interviews for the top candidates. And at this time, we can choose to take action to approve a superintendent, or we can choose to continue the process.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to motion that we approve Dr. Rebecca Stone to be our next superintendent.
Do I have a second? Okay. So the motion was to approve Dr. Stone as, oh, Mrs. Cox did, yes. So our board is pleased to announce that we have offered the superintendent position to Dr. Rebecca Stone, and she has accepted. She's hoping to be in Havasu beginning in March, and that will give her about three months to work alongside Superintendent Asire, and we're hoping that that will pave the way for a smooth transition. This was not an easy decision. We interviewed six superintendent candidates, and any one of those people could have served our district well, and in fact, several of them already do in their current positions. The members of our board represent five different sets of ideals and priorities, particularly when it comes to striking a balance between innovation and continuity. We were looking for someone who could bring new ideas to our schools while leading with a steady hand, and we think that we found that in Dr. Stone. I am proud of our board, and I'm proud of Superintendent Asire for taking this task seriously and approaching it with fair-mindedness. I'm also proud of our staff, our students, and our community for caring so deeply about our district. Many, many, many of you sent emails, texts, or stop me to have a conversation about the direction that you think that our district should head in. And those opinions were weighed very carefully. Although I will note that no one sent me a cookie basket, which that felt like a missed opportunity on your part.[753.12][753.12](Laughter). That's just a joke. You're not allowed to send brides, and I'm not allowed to accept them. But we know that our staff and our community will welcome her with open mind and open arms. She comes with a depth of education, experience, and expertise, and she really represents an opportunity for our community to add someone to our district who just brings a wealth of experience.
Well said.
Thank you. Well, I wrote it out. I'm better on, I'm better on paper than in person. Any other comments to add?
I, I would like to also let you know that it was a tough decision. It was one of those, one of those things where, just like Lisa said, any one of the six people that we chose to interview would have made a good fit for our superintendent's Dr. Stone, and I'm not going to speak for her, but Dr. Stone is coming from Manassas, Virginia, similarly sized district. She sits currently in the position between the directors and the superintendent, kind of in a quasi-assistant superintendent's position. She was at one point offered the superintendent's position in her own district. She is motivated to be in Havasu because she has family here and is choosing to move here to be closer to her mother. And so in looking all the way around, it's going to be a really good fit for our district. And I'm very pleased that we could find six people of that caliber and come to a consensus on one.
So if there's nothing further, I will call for the vote.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Item 6.2 is the approval of project management services for bond capital improvement projects, and Mr. Murray will present.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the procurement of project management services with the H2 Group for an amount not to exceed $160,000 utilizing the Mojave Cooperative Contract. Due to the number of projects and volume of work planned this calendar year, including projects planned at all school sites this summer, the need was identified to supplement the district's staff resources with independent third-party project management services. H2 Group will serve as Lake Havasu Unified School District's representative during the planning, construction, procurement, and construction phases. Services under this agreement are scheduled to conclude at the end of the calendar year 2020. H2 will represent LHUSD staff in providing coordination, reviews of project construction documents, conceptual budget cost estimating, construction procurement assistance, owner-architect contractor coordination meetings during design and construction, regular onsite representation during construction, construction schedule and progress monitoring, review of contractor pay applications, review of contractor requests for change orders and/or contingency allowance usage, representation during punch list reviews, and closeout document coordination and reviews. Beyond supplementing LHUSD's staffing needs, H2 Group's services are anticipated to bring additional value to LHUSD in the following ways. Licensed K-12 experienced staff on every project, recognized education facility planner, expertise in K-12 educational project planning, certified public procurement officer who will assist with construction procurement, certified professional estimator with expertise in project budgeting and cost estimating, better coordinated construction documents saving time and money during construction, thorough reviews of change order and contingency allowance requests resulting cost savings, construction fee and GMP negotiations resulting in cost savings, and SFB project experience and process assistance. And this item has been reviewed by purchasing. We also have Mr. Beck from the H2 Group here in attendance tonight.
Do I have a motion?
I would move we approve 6.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Murray, what specific projects are we talking about using this group to assist us with?
We have the high school Phase II and Thunderbolt athletic fields as part of Phase II. We have the office security improvements for all of our facilities, the high school administration office, the addition there, as well as the possibility of some major work happening at both Oro Grande and Starline when it comes to fencing, concrete work, playgrounds. Those are also big projects scheduled for the summer.
I have a question. First of all, where is Mr. Beck? Hello, Mr. Beck. I saw you come in earlier. You list labor expenses, but then you have a separate category called expenses. Now, it's only $19,000, and I'm just curious, what would those expenses be?
Yes, please.
Are we putting you up in hotels? What are we doing?
Yes, ma'am. Board members, and yes, that's basically it. It's travel, it's travel and living expenses, and that's a number, an estimate of what we think those would be. They'll be charged at the actual rate, and we think we can do a little better than what's listed there. But those expenses will be billed at our cost.
Okay. And then I notice that you say that you will be through with all of this in black during this calendar year. Now, to me, the calendar year ends June 30.
The calendar year we're talking about is the end of 2020.
Oh, okay. All right. I really didn't think you could get this.
That's what we anticipate.
So just making sure. All right. Good, I'm glad I asked that question. That was really all I could ask.
Yeah, not the fiscal, it's the, yeah.
You guys are going to be busy.
Yep.
So Mr. Murray's presentation was very thorough, but is there anything else that you think we should know before we make our decision?
Just that we're excited to be here and to help, and we feel like the expertise and value that we bring, the district will realize the real benefit from having us involved. And from what we've seen so far and know so far, it's a great team to be working with, and we just appreciate the opportunity to help.
Okay. I know if you're in the audience, you don't have these numbers in front of us, or in front of you, but we are talking about approximately $6 million worth of projects, and the fee that we would be paying for your services comprises about 2.6% of that budget. And I had a chance to speak with Mr. Murray a little bit beforehand, and he said that typically what we save because of trimming waste and hiring you as experts typically pays for the service fee.
To speak to that item, there's a number of ways that that happens, but in general, the areas that Mr. Murray mentioned, the quality control on the documents that are bid, the input into the planning process, our experience there, negotiations of fees with the contractors on their jobs, and the quality control during the job, looking to make sure things are done right, heading off, because we can provide a more regular representation onsite than your staff has time to do. We can head off issues and concerns that come up and save the money that results from having to redo things. So some of those things are measurable, some are kind of intangible and benefit the district, but yeah, that's our history.
Okay.
And it looks like we're literally hitting all eight schools, including parking at Starline? Am I reading this right? We're going to put parking at Starline?
That's correct.
That's his problem now.
Yeah, we don't have anyone in-house who could do this, but I noticed that you have a reference here from, I believe it was Washington Elementary School District, and they have someone there who's possibly capable of doing this, but he said, no, no, you know, we need to hire your firm to do this. And it was a very convincing letter.
Oh, we appreciate the reference. I'll have to, I'll have to seek that person out and tell them thank you. Yes, we worked for Washington for several years.
I did check references that were provided, and that was just one of them. I had some just phone calls and conversations over the phone that did also speak highly of this firm, Washington Elementary. He was able to just put it down on paper, and I submitted as part of the backup. To clarify the schedule here, as Mrs. Cox, as you pointed out, it is an aggressive plan. Again, this contract goes through the end of the calendar year, so December of 2020. There will most likely be, in some areas, a need to continue on at a future date, just because of the scope of work and the needs at each of these sites. It'll be unlikely that we're able to check every one of these, every one of these boxes here to make sure we're done by December of 2020, but as long as, as long as we can keep shovels moving and people working and the funds flowing, we will do our best to try to make full use of their time.
Well, I know one thing for sure: You will live a lot longer.
That's good to know.
Any further questions or discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.3, the first presentation, review of revisions to policy GCI and new policies GCI dot, or dash RA and GCI dash RB, presented by Mrs. Bestedagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the first presentation of revised policies GCI, new policies GCIRA and GCIRB. New policies will replace GCB A, E A, and GCB A, E B, and GDB A, R. We are requesting to update the educational advancement policy to align staff working procedures with board policy. The policy was written to comply with a stepped salary schedule, which we no longer use. The language is updated to reflect our current process of salary placement. The Personnel Department is also listing the increases for educational advancement in policy, which has not been done in the past. The amounts for each educational advancement have remained unchanged for 20 years. We are requesting the following increases to the educational advancement amounts at 12 credits. Certified and salaried support staff, 750 to $1,000. Support staff, 35 cents an hour to 45 cents an hour. RN and LPN, 45 cents to 50 cents an hour. Administration, $1,000 to $1,500 at 15 credits. This is appropriate as the cost of coursework has greatly increased in the past 20 years. Policy is specific about what categories of coursework staff can be enrolled in and under what conditions courses can be taken to qualify for educational advancement. The Educational Advancement Board of Review works with the Personnel Department to vet coursework and make approvals. This team has done an excellent job ensuring we are acknowledging coursework that is completed aligns to district goals, and coursework that does not comply with current, and coursework that does not comply with current policy and procedures. We are also requesting that support staff who are enrolled in college coursework leading to a position that requires ADE certification be able to earn advancement up through their bachelor's degree. Currently, support staff can earn advancement through 72 credits. This is in response to the Board's wishes to continue to address recruitment of qualified teachers. Historically, between 10 and 20 staff members qualify for educational advancement each year. This has been approved by the Business Department for budget planning purposes. It is requested that changes in the amount of advancement not take place till July 20, July 1, 2020, to align with the fiscal year.
I move that we postpone this item until we can have a work session or two. Will we get it done?
Second.
This is, seems to be a really big program. I was really surprised when I opened my board packet, and I'm thinking, okay, this is going to be a pretty easy meeting, but this is so big, and I don't, I'm not sure if we, if we can even afford to do it. I know historically, this has been for 10 to 20 staff members, but this looks like it opens it up for 550 staff members. And I have concerns about that, and then I also have concerns just about how the policy's drafted. I'm willing to go through it line by line tonight, but very similar to the, to, I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of it, the staff review, the observations, kind of like that. Like, I have something, concerns about almost every single sentence in both new policies. So that's why I would like to postpone it, and I think it really needs a work session to vet out a lot of what I'm concerned about.
Does this recommendation come from elsewhere? Where did it originate?
So currently, what's in practice, I mean, what's in practice is really, for the most part, what we're doing. You know, there, we give educational advancement right now at 12 credits. It's $750. We meet three times a year, not four times a year. We laid out in policy some of the specifics about what we allow and what we don't allow. That has all been done through the department and through working procedures, and so we want it to be in policy so it's clear to employees in policy rather than procedure of who sits in my role, and it's passed down. So that's important to me, that things are in writing. But this is really, you know, this is, educational advancement is something that is very common among educators and educational institutions and has been around for as long as I've been here, and staff gets it and works through it. It's a matter of clarifying what is allowed. So most of this policy is just taken from the other two policies and moved into a different area, so it's all aligned together instead of being spread out all throughout, being spread all throughout different areas of Governing Board policy.
So you're not changing any procedures? It's just, the main thing here is you're just raising the amount of money for the, for the 15 hours?
We're raising the amount of money, and we're asking that...
For the 12, for the 12 credits?
We're raising the amount of money, and we're asking that we allow for classified staff to move all the way to a bachelor's degree for those who are working to become educators. Right now, that's not in or out of policy. We're asking that it be moved in policy so that it's written down somewhere.
So, so I'm clear. And I, professional development, let's go do that, all day and all night. But does this create internal boards, then, that vet what we allow for professional development?
There's always been an internal board in policy forever and ever.
There's always been an internal board in policy forever and ever. That board exists in policy, and so that is already there.
Which policy is that?
So if you go to GC...
It's in GCBAEB.
R.
The Board of Review is noted on the second page of the red line out, and that's, most of that language is now in the new policy.
But the Board of Review is made up by, first of all, staff has to, a site's staff has to vote, and then the principal can approve.
No, so I overview, I overview the board.
Okay, I'm talking about placement of the members.
The placement of the members are by the principal.
Approval of the principal after voted on by staff. So that, to me, is like, this is not a popularity contest. This is, the principal of the site should be able to make the recommendation for who's going to sit on this Board of Review.
Correct.
So that's one of my many issues with it. I don't know that that's appropriate for a whole site to vote on who they want to sit. This is not like Employee Benefit Trust, where they want somebody representing them. This is who's the most qualified to vet. And frankly, all the language in here isn't very specific. I went to ASU, and I looked at their professional development, a lot of which is free, and I don't want our teachers taking some of those things. So there is nothing in here that is directing specifically what the professional development that we would be paying for, adding this new class, classification for classified staff, and there's nothing in there for the teachers as well.
So for classified staff, it needs to be aligned with their position. So if you are an office employee, your professional development needs to help you do things in the office. If you aren't the HVAC person, your professional development needs to be aligned with HVAC or putting you on the path to become an ADE certified staff member, whether that is a teacher, whether that is a school psychologist, or whether that is a speech-language pathologist. So it's aligned with what your position is. We are very stringent upon what we allow for. So we see, sometimes, we see this pretty often, that someone who wants to work on paralegal courses, well, that's telling us that they want to go be a paralegal outside of the school system. And so the Board of Review, which is under the direction of myself, there's also an administrator on the Board of Review, we look at what's the purpose of this course? Is the purpose within the scope of education or their position, or is this for you to get a job elsewhere? We are very consistent in what we look at. So having classified just taking classes isn't, I mean, that's not aligned with policy. It's within their scope of their position.
So I just want to make sure, so nothing in the current policy would change, just the amounts are increasing? Every, the nuts and bolts of how we actually do this remains the same?
The nuts and bolts of how we do this remain the same. We added a fourth meeting. We've asked for preapproval. What we were getting was a lot of people taking classes and then coming to us for approval afterwards. The language, the policy language points to preapproval, so we added another meeting so people had more time to ask us if this was okay or not okay.
Okay. And then the amount...
Not all of this language is directly taken from the previous policy. There is some additional language that basically clarifies what our practice is and what our practice has been, so it's not a direct...
Gotcha, okay.
So...
And then, oh, yes. So for the amount increases, did you come up with those on your own? Was that in consultation with somebody else or to keep pace with other districts or...
So we talked about this together. Districts are all over the place. We looked at other districts and what they're doing, but districts are really all over the place. There's districts that do different amounts of credits, different, and so this is what seems in place, that everyone's about the same percentage and is in line with what our current salaries are.
Who is "we," please?
Direct, I'm sorry, the directors.
Okay.
So, and I'm pulling up PolicyBridge right now, but it seems that everyone else has got a policy on GCI that simply says, "The superintendent shall." It's not this long, fleshed-out, set-in-stone document. Why are we doing this so much differently than everybody else on PolicyBridge, on GCI?
So right now, it's in GDBA, which really points to support staff salary schedules. We don't have a salary schedule anymore, so it makes more sense that it is under professional development.
Can I redirect you, then, because I'm talking about GCI proper? Our GCI proper, prior to this, didn't comport with what most everybody else is doing on GCI, which is pretty much boilerplate. And now we're changing it further to kind of tighten that. What's wrong with the superintendent can direct this? Which is what I'm seeing everybody else has in their policy.
I don't understand. You want all of this replaced just with the words, "The superintendent shall," and then that responsibility?
No, what I'm doing is I'm looking at the entire state of Arizona, and Lake Havasu Unified has decided that we need to have very specific policy on something that everybody paints with a very broad brush stroke. And so I'm kind of wondering, why are we doing it so much differently from everybody else? It seems like it's very specific in direction on how to do this.
Why isn't that a good thing, though? Why isn't it a good thing for a staff member to be able to look up and say, "Well, these are the steps that I need to do if I want to do this, and this is the compensation that I can expect"?
Because I would imagine that's been reduced to an employee handbook and not policy.
Again, why is that bad?
Let me just...
Why would we have the internal bureaucracy? I mean, I'll just put it right back to you. We're in policy now creating internal bureaucracy to vet whether or not professional development happens and how. In private enterprise, this is not how this works. In private enterprise, you go to your boss, and it's yes or no, based on a handbook, not a policy. And if it's yes, then you're expected to get a certain grade on certain things, and there's a striation on, you get an A, you get this much, you get a B, you get this much, and so on. What bothers me is that we are setting up boards, and that may be handled in another policy that I don't have here in front of me. I don't have, again, just like health, I don't have information in front of me, and I'm being asked to make a decision. And then, to boot, we have got a much more expansive policy already on GCI than anybody else, and we're making changes to justify a practice in our policy. Our policy should inform our practice, and it just sounds like we're going backwards into this, and it kind of befuddles me as to why we go backwards into something like that.
Well, just from experience, you have, oh, go ahead, Mrs. Sire.
I just wanted to clarify that. So for, right now, we have policy regulation, and we have exhibits. And so what we had in the past, we had our GCBA, which is our professional staff salary schedules. We actually had that, brought it to the Board in June of 2019 to revise that, because we don't have salary schedule anymore. Then an attachment to that would be the GCBAEB, which is the exhibit that talks about all of that, that's lined out here. It's in your binder there in red. I'm sorry I have page numbers on it, but the exhibit GCB, which delineates all of this information. And so that was, you know, the document for how we do things in practice. Then the GDBA, which is the support staff salary schedules, that one was changed in 2014. Those have been updated, but none of the other exhibits that go along with those have been updated. And so I think what Mrs. Dagel was trying to explain is that we were looking at the professional development piece, and it seemed to fit under GCI. The way that ASBA policy is, if it's a GB, it's all staff; if it's a GC, it's professional staff; if it's a GD, it's support staff. And so you have, like, replicative policies going throughout. And so our intention was to combine both of those into the GCI with professional and support staff, and then just have a regulation that defined it, as opposed to having exhibits. And so that was the intent of, it's actually condensing a lot of paperwork that hadn't been kept up to date at all. And so what was happening is our district practice was ongoing. I inherited it when I came here. I don't know how long it's been here, but the practice didn't match what was in the exhibits, and none of it was codified in policy or regulation. So that was the overall intent of pulling this together.
And can I, oh, do you generally support this policy change or update?
I do, although I do think that if there are questions on it, we certainly need to address those.
Yes.
Because if board members have seen concerns that we haven't identified, then certainly we need to go through it and refine it. This is a brand-new policy. It's not, there has been no GCI, RA, or RB in the past. They're brand-new. They do primarily take from those other two policies that were in support of the salary schedule policies.
Let me ask one question. Under GCI, RA, would a staff member be able to, or a certified staff member be able to take professional development in transdisciplinary teaching strategies?
Are they, is it credited through a university?
ASU.
Is it an EDU coursework?
I don't know. I don't know that answer. But my point is, is that I brought that concern up, and we've never discussed it, you know, as a board, and so I was really caught off guard that, A, this came, didn't come from Brad, just because of the title of it, and maybe that's my wrong thinking, but that we were going to make a policy before discussing some very serious concerns, which, as I read through these policies, which granted, I have not read through every policy under ASBA, I do as they come up, but this is exactly what I was speaking about in December, and I have really big concerns, and I really think that we should have a conversation about it before we put a policy in place that people are going to be budgeting into their annual salaries, before we vet out what we should and shouldn't be doing when it comes to professional development, especially if it's going to be coming from the Board or in an effort to, how is it put? This is in response to the Board's wishes to continue to address recruitment of qualified teachers. Again, I was just surprised at this being in the packet, and I really think we should do a work session on it before we make a decision. I really think that it's going to be a lot more than 10 to 20 people, too, this new policy. And I don't know if that's been budgeted for, and it kind of seems like this is part of a budget question before we have a budget.
So we do have time to have a work session.
Sure.
This wouldn't go into place until July anyway, if we approve it. Would you mind, if I understand you correctly, you have an objection to transdisciplinary education?
Yes.
Can you summarize your objections? I don't need, like, the whole, I just, I'm just curious.
It's a total overstep on parental rights. We'll leave it at that.
To combine a couple of disciplines?
It's not about just combining a couple of disciplines.
Okay, then what do you mean when you use that term?
I'm not going to go into, I was, I mean, I have my book, but I'm not going to have this argument. I've asked to speak with Brad Gardner about it. I've spent five hours with Kathy. I spoke with Jamie about it. I've brought it up in the past. This is, I don't have to explain that this moment in order to say this is one of the reasons why I don't want to approve this tonight.
Okay. I'm not going to put you on the spot. I was just curious if you could summarize your objections.
Well, it's a very complicated subject matter that is taking over education, and that alone calls for a board conversation, in my opinion, which I stated in December. So anyways.
Okay.
Motion on the second?
Yes.
To a work session.
Right. Are we ready to call the question, or is there more discussion?
Well, I think when a board member is this concerned that it would be best to have a work session, I don't really understand, but it doesn't matter. I think we need to honor her concern and have a work session.
I will go along with that. Okay, I think we're ready to call the question.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Can we schedule a work session?
We're not all meetinged out yet, so, no.
I still think you are.
Okay. Item 6.4, Presentation and Review of Policy EEB, Business and Personnel Transportation Services, presented by Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board approve the first presentation revisions of Policy EEB, Business and Personnel Transportation Services. District had a situation where a non-staff member volunteer had to drive a district vehicle. Original arrangements had a staff member driving, but because of a family emergency, they were no longer able to travel. This left the volunteer as the driver just days prior to travel. Revision to this policy will allow the superintendent to permit exceptions in an emergency situation, as you can see in the document supporting the blue line addition.
I move that we approve 6.4 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.5, the approval of monthly Governing Board meeting dates for 2020-2021. Mrs. Sire?
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the dates listed for regularly scheduled Governing Board meetings for the 2021 school year. All of the dates are the third Tuesday of the month, which adheres to district policy, but we do have some exceptions, and those would be March 9th due to spring break, July 6th, and May 4th, changes regarding the state mandated budget deadline.
Do I have a motion on 6.5?
I move we approve 6.5 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? No, I didn't. Sorry about that.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Okay. Item 6.6, the approval of memorandum of understanding between Hospice of Havasu and Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One, Lake Havasu High School, presented by...
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached memorandum of understanding between Hospice of Havasu and Lake Havasu Unified School District. That would be effective from February 20th, 2020, through June 30th, 2021. Approval of this memorandum of understanding will enable the Lake Havasu High School to provide much-needed grief support groups to high school students. Parent permission will be required. Hospice of Havasu will provide these services at no cost to the high school, and this has been approved by legal. I would like to remind the Board that we did approve an agreement with Hospice of Havasu to provide those grief support classes K through 8. The high school was inadvertently left out of that memorandum of understanding, which is why we have an additional one coming forward.
I move we approve 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just appreciate the additional information that is in this with the HIPAA and the extra language about how important the personal information is, not just of the students they serve, but the staff and the Board as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.7, Approval of Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds, presented by Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board approve the vouchers for January of 2020 and student activity funds for K-12 for December of 2019, as well as auxiliary funds for December 2019.
I move we approve 6.7 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. That concludes our new business. Do we have any informational items?
Yes. Thank you. As always, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our community for all of the gifts and donations, and I may sound like a broken record in this, but we cannot say thank you enough for all of those organizations, individuals, businesses that support our district. Our year-to-date for 1920, we're up over $204,000 in donations.
Wow.
And that's just incredible for us. I also would like to thank the Mayor and the Vice Mayor for being here this evening and talking about 2020 census. vice mayor for being here this evening and talking about 2020 census. I was honored, and I know Mrs. Ramon and Mr. Masden were also there, to attend the state of the city and the state of the state on February 13th. And our mayor was very kind in honoring our district. He recognized us for being a national board-accomplished district. And I'm not sure if the board is aware, but we are the only one in Arizona. And so, that's pretty exciting. And then, he also recognized Oro Grande Classical Academy because we are the only traditional public school in the United States that has the permission to use the Hillsdale curriculum. And so, we have very special schools and opportunities. He always has great things to say about our district, and we appreciate your support.
May I have to make a comment? I also would like to say something to Mayor Jihi and Vice Mayor David Lane. Most of our visitors get up and walk out before the next item on the agenda. So, I really think that's a tribute to the two of us that you waited all the way through and you listened to this. Now, you look and see how well we get along? We just move things right along. Did you notice?
We were on our best behavior.
Not like all of the city council meetings I've watched at 2:00 AM in the morning.
I actually, I actually told them I was going to move them to the end of the agenda if they didn't.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. What you, what you said at the, at the Governor's Breakfast really did highlight the very best of our school district, so thank you. Anything else informational? Do we have a call to the public? Okay. Any board suggestions for future agenda items?
I would like to talk about the board member ethics at some point. BCA, board member ethics.
Like as an agenda item or as a special?
As an agenda item, to update, yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the board members? Anything from press or media?
All right. I would like to welcome, I believe we have students.
I see quite a few students in the audience. Thank you for being here tonight.
We have no idea why, but I'm sure it's really, like for a grade or something.
Yes, okay.
School credit, that's right.
Not just, not just for kicks on a Tuesday night?
It's civics class 101.
Thank you. We love having you.
I wonder if I can get the salary for the kids.
Yes, can I say that now or just, okay. We offered her $118,000. And then, the benefits package is consistent, yes.
And I will be sending some information out to all staff tomorrow, including some of her, her background information. I will copy you on that.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.